Because I'm focused the first thing in the morning. I do the best I can. Yeah. But I get very tired. Yeah.
How are you doing?
Always good to see you. I see your movie again. Where are you now?
I'm at Harper. I remember you doing.
Hey.
Oh, I sure do. And I think about that. And I see my girlfriend, she has no life. Then I sounded to him and I was like, can he be like that? I know you do. It's not because of her. She'll be like, watch out, Mr. Murphy. How many do you have now? What about the donkey? That donkey. How are you doing? Good. Good. I don't know. Yeah, yeah, I know. You're doing all right. I love her. Come up here with us. It is yourself. Yes, that's right. We disappear weeks before you can hear it. That's why it's here. She looks so like you. He's a good one. I'm on tear, she can't call me. She emailed me some, I didn't change my number. No, you're not answering. Harder than that, she does. One more year. Call us, we'll make it happen. Look, I don't need to talk to her. Call us if you're fine. Not listening to you. I had seen pictures of you. I'm here.
Okay.
Put your hand. Say, I'm your old baby. Tight baby. Come on, dog. You can have it. Put it along. Daycare, I'll pay you. I was like, look at that little kid. Do they? You're looking on me. I'm good. I was like, oh, I could call some good brother.
This is the, the second quarter. This is the third quarter.
Thank you.
I was trying to be cool. Back in. I did that, did that thing before I put that. Don't be silly with this. Thank you.
Are you from Illinois? Come back.
She's the one time you spit.
You take, you take it easy.
Come on, come on. But I'll have it. You try to play with the head, so it's not going.
Like back. So we have a little. Thank you.
Mr. Nice. Good, how are you? Good to see you. Isn't it good to see you today? You're not a very good person.
Yeah. Home station. It should be. Okay. Hey, man. What did you say? Hell, that's a flea. Say it again.
How are you? I think I've got a little right there.
Take my wrist.
Because we're coming.
And just when they say. The donkey. Donkey. Well, that's a funny.
Thank you. To the, to the. In real. We're not for real. So there you. Fixing your videos. Can't. Fixing the videos. Then you can. Then you two years.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good, thank you for attending our meeting this evening. You have a full house. That lets us know you're interested in what we are doing tonight. I would declare and call the meeting to come to order. The public can view our board meeting at youtube.com slash C. Edcombe County Public School. At this time, we will ask everyone to sit as we recite our pledge of allegiance. I'm saying.
For you, the state of America. And to the other important strength. One nation under God. In a peaceful, without fear. The interest, please stand for a moment. As we celebrate the lives of those men and women who may be here. Who served our nation and served us. Thank them for their service to our lives. And difference to Veterans Day on tomorrow. Join me and give them a nice round of applause. The people here, raise your hands. Any service person? If you know a service person.
I'll be speaking to the young ones. That's right.
I say it very, very. I thought it'd be a virgin. Here for them to be informed.
Thanks for that. Those have been people inside of the business. Because tomorrow is a holiday for people. Those. Okay, I hope everyone has a copy of our agenda. We will try to follow it to the few. I will ask, Dr. Ryan. You have any information to share with us? That we have not already received or on our agenda?
No changes, Madam Chair.
Okay, but that said, I need to hear a motion to approve our agenda for November the 10th as printed. Madam Chair, that motion that we approve our agenda as presented. Has been moved and properly seconded. That we will approve our agenda as printed for November 10th, 2025. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by a state of aye. Opposed, the same sign. The motion carries. Thank you very much. Item three, recognition is open.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Mister Vice Chair. Members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Ryan. This month, we are pleased to recognize Ms. Jacqueline Edmondson, lead custodian at DS Johnson Elementary School. As the. Number ten for me. As Ms. Jackie, she takes tremendous pride in keeping DS Johnson safe, clean, and welcoming her students, staff, and families. Her attention to detail and dedication ensures that every part of the school reflects the care that she puts into her work. She, her impact goes far beyond her daily responsibilities. She's an active part of the school community, helping plan school events, pitching in whenever needed, always going above and beyond to make sure students, staff, and visitors feel valued and at home. She is known for her warm smile, her kind spirit, and her encouraging words to students each day. Her positivity and work ethic make her an invaluable member of the DS Johnson family. Mrs. Edmondson, thank you for your commitment, your kindness, and the pride you take in your work. You embody what it means to serve with excellence, and you are, we are truly grateful for all that you do. Congratulations, Mrs. Jackie Edmondson. And also a big applause for Ms. Edmondson from Greg Sessom State Farm Agent.
I thought it was, uh, thought it would have been behind me.
I always say this might be the best part of the meeting.
Yeah.
To always acknowledge those who want. Okay, item number four. Our public.
Leading to the board. Can I be joined by Dr. Johnson? Mister. Mister Robert Moore. My name is James Carden. I'm the local Phil Dino of the George Washington Carver Alumni Association. This is Robert Moore. He's the vice president of the National Chapter of the George Carver Alumni Association. And Dr. Johnson, which is the board member here, she's the former president of the George Washington Carver Alumni Association. Also, yeah, this is one we're here tonight. And this time, it's just simple. We just want to make a presentation. For, uh, from, uh, the George Washington Carver Alumni Association to, uh, to George Washington Carver Elementary Schools in the amount of $1,000 this year. And, and we also, we have a second check coming from, uh, Pintop Old Body Improvement Club for a amount of $250 this year.
It's always, and I know that every student is excited when the Alumni Association acknowledges their school. This is wonderful thing. Now, it's time for our public. According to our. We would ask, we are supposed to have seven people signed at one meeting. But we're gonna ask the board to waive the 202310 policy. So that we can hear everyone who signed up tonight. Uh, we are about four people over. Uh, we are about four people over to sign up amounts that we should have, but I'm thinking you're already here and we want to hear what you have to say. So we are asking officially.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we waive policy 2310, the public comic, public comment policy to allow all the speakers who are present this evening to be able to speak to the board.
Has been moved and properly seconded that we will waive policy 2310 so that all sign up speaker can speak at this meeting. All in favor of the motion, let us now vote aye. Opposed, the same sign, motion carries. So we will have everyone listen. Okay, first person signed up. Sarah, is that? Hannover.
Good evening, Members of the Board, Superintendent, and Community members.
I forgot to say, I'm sorry. Three minutes.
Three minutes. My name is Sarah Kavanaugh, and I am proud to say that I am a native of Tarver, a product of the Edco County Public Schools, and I've served in this district for more than 18 years. When I think back on my time as a student here, I can still remember the teachers who made me feel seen and capable. Mrs. Hodges, Mrs. Rooks, Mrs. Edwards. They weren't just teaching lessons, they were building confidence, giving smiles, and offering words of encouragement that made a difference for a girl who was just an average student. That love, that sense of belonging is what led me to become an educator. Today, I stand here not just for myself, but for my students and their families who depend on us for so much more than academics. Many of our children come to school carrying emotional burdens that require more support than we can give. In my school, we have no school counselor and not enough staff to create safe spaces for emotional growth or even time for clubs and activities that can reengage our students. On top of that, we as teachers are stretched beyond reason. We have no protected playing time, no guaranteed moments to breathe or even take a rest during break. Many eat up the little time we have to plan instruction, grade work, analyze data, or create lessons that meet our students' diverse needs. We're expected to do this all every week, but we enter a new workday. Is that supposed to happen? I love my students, and I love this county. But loving them should not mean running ourselves into exhaustion. We need to value and protect the educators who have deep roots of this community. Because when teachers feel supported, students believe they can do anything. We are asking not just for ourselves, but for the future of Edco County's children. After all, without Edco County's teachers, staff, and students, would we even have a board of education? So can't we all work together for the good of everyone? Shouldn't we all share our ideas? And please invest in us so that we can continue to pour into our community and into our children that allow us to have a seat at the table to discuss issues with you and to help you find solutions for all of us by showing your support for a meet and confer policy. Isn't there room for us all? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, Members of the Board. My name is Alexis Tate, and I work at Cochrane Women Elementary as an instructional assistant in kindergarten. I also drive literally three feet deep, both morning and afternoon. Oh, sorry, both before and after my regular screen shield. I love what I do. I care deeply about our students, and I take pride in being one of the first and last faces they see each day. But I'm here tonight because I'm frustrated, and I know I'm not the only one. Like so many of my colleagues, I'm doing two jobs every single day to help our district keep running. Recently, I was forced to drive for North Edco, North Edco High School because they had drivers out and no substitute available. That meant the students on my regular route had to split between two other buses, making their rides even longer. Some of our youngest students are on the bus for far too long, and that's not fair for them or to us. We stretch thin, and it's, it feels like we're being asked to do the impossible. The issues with classified staffs has turned into a crisis, and the people who are holding it all together deserve, deserve to have a real voice and find a solution. That's why I'm asking you to support a meet and confer policy. We're not asking for miracles, we're asking to be heard. We're the ones who are there every single day on the buses, in the classrooms, in the cafeteria, and in the halls doing the work that keeps our students moving. If, if you want real solutions, they have to come from the people living in this reality. We need a seat at the table so that we can discuss being laid about this to the family and students. Thank you.
Um, I am, um, not even a North Carolina original resident. I've been here for about twenty-something years. But nevertheless, um, I came to speak on behalf of the Bus Driver as well. I have a former coworker who was, um, in the department, and he was instructed that he had to get his driver. So he went and got a license to drive a bus. During the conversation with someone or another, he was also told that if he did not drive, he would lose his job. Now, I happen to know this young individual as a heartless young man, and he has a family. Many young black men do not tend to their families the way that they should. And I was deeply saddened when he told me that if he did not drive, he would lose his job. He likes to go and pick up his son in the afternoon from Inglewood because he wants to be active in his child's life. So that's my concern. But as I look coming into this meeting today at the Edco career opportunities that are listed, we only have too much driving position. So as the young lady who spoke before me said, you know, it's a crisis. It's hard on people who work every day, all day, and have another job that they have to do either before or after, and in some cases both. They don't get home till late hours. And I think it would help them, and it would help us. Like, I work at Phillips a lot of time. Our students are late in the morning because we don't have a driver. This afternoon, 360 degrees held up because I'm assuming we did not have a driver. If we could do something to help our drivers at least to feel more comfortable about driving, feel more, um, encouraged or motivated to drive, then maybe we wouldn't have such a bus crisis. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It seems like our grievance was about the same. I didn't realize we was all on the same. But I say again, good evening to Members of the Board and that. I'm Doris Jones, and I'm proud to serve as the office support at North Edco High School. I come before you tonight to share some of the burdens I face on my road, but not complain. But to help you understand the challenge that many of us support staff experience daily. My official position is office support, but my duties do not stop me. In addition to handling all office responsibilities, I perform as a manager-in-chief, the prime report, supporting teachers, and administrative. We do current and students continue to smooth, run smooth. I also serve as a full-time bus driver. My day begins early at 5:30 a.m. or 3:00. When I start receiving emails and calls before teachers be in the afternoon, then I have to try to stay reserved. At the same time, I'm a bus driver. I have to get out and get on the bus, and be on that bus, and then come back off that bus and go to my bed. Every now and then, when the phones is ringing, the office is full, and my workload is heavy. It's beginning to become a burden to me. Uh, the truth is, it's stretched thin. The students depend on us. The staff depends on us. The school cannot function without the support of the staff who helps to do much of the, of the behind scenes, is which I do a lot. I love what I do. I care for our staff, students, and our students because I am asking the board tonight to recognize, frame, and support staff and consider a way to relieve some of the burdens. I have tried for years to get off the bus. I worked for the E C department, uh, before this job, if you're now here. I wasn't supposed to drive the bus, but we didn't have enough drivers. So I drove the bus. I had students that I should have met getting off the bus. I could not meet those students because I had other obligations. And I've always done my obligations. I had, um, students that depended on me to meet them at the bus stop. But did I get to do that? No, I didn't. And thank you for listening at me, just listening at me with my grievance. To the staff, the students at our school, North Edco, I love them because I was rooted right in the niggas, right where North Edco sits, right across the store. That's, I mean, off the street, that's where my dad owned. Lily and I grew up together. So you didn't know where I came from. So thank you, everyone, for listening at me, and my two cents tonight will go to our every section of the town.
Good evening, everyone. My name is James. I work at GW Carver. I want to speak on a meet and confer for us. Uh, meeting confer would be very good for us because it gives other people, um, custodians, bus drivers, uh, teachers, to speak on what's going on in our schools. And I just picked a one person to speak for everybody because one person can't speak for everybody. So being able to be in there all together, we can all speak for each other. Um, I'm a bus driver. Um, I've seen a lot of routes. Um, my journey has been grateful. Um, and I'm a custodian. I'm going back trying to keep the school clean after driving a bus almost to like 5:30. Um, it's very tiresome. Um, I know a lot of people. I worked with a lot of custodians this summer. These guys work hard. Um, these bus drivers are in and out, morning, afternoon, trying to get these buses driven, get these kids home sometime. Um, schools don't have bus drivers, so we do get, um, called to go to different schools. I just had that a few months ago. I didn't have no problem with it. As long as I had a monitor, I was fine. You know what I'm saying? So, um, I think meeting confer is good for everybody. Custodians, teachers, and bus drivers, just so we'll, we can let y'all know exactly what's going on with everything in our schools. Thank you.
Bonnie. Uh, Marsha. Ronnie.
Good evening to the board and all else in attendance. My name is Ronnie Mercetti. This will be my fifth year attending Scott Elementary as, in my third year as a physical education teacher. I am speaking on behalf of the dedicated staff who serve Edco County schools, the teachers, the instructional assistants, bus drivers, custodians, child nutrition workers, and office staff who keep our schools running every single day. We are here because we have, we believe Edco County employees deserve to be through a meet and confer policy that allows educators and staff to work and collaborate with district leaders on the issues that impact our lives the most. A meet and confer process isn't about confrontation, it's about a partnership. It gives those of us on the front lines, you know, in the classrooms, in cafeterias, buses, and offices, a formal way to share our concerns, offer solutions, and help the district make informed decisions that make, that work for everyone involved. We've seen recently why this matters. Over the past several months, there have been payroll errors that cause real hardship for staff. Employees being doubly charged for insurance, seeing unexplained deductions on their checks, or writing long, or waiting long periods for corrections. For many of our colleagues, these mistakes have, have caused stress and financial strain. These are not isolated instances. They point to larger issues of communication and accountability. And that's exactly where a meet and confer policy could make a difference. When staff have a consistent structured space to raise concerns early, before problems grow, we could prevent these situations from repeating. We can work side by side with district leadership to strengthen systems, protect staff, protect staff stability, and keep the focus on our scholars. Edco County Schools prays itself on being innovative and student-focused, but to be true, to be truly student-centered, we must also be educator-centered because the success of our students depends on the stability of and well-being of the adults that serve them. Other districts, the districts across North Carolina have adopted meet and confer policies. It has led to stronger relationships, greater transparency, and fewer avoidable errors. It works, and it's time for Edco County to jump forward. Thank you for your time, your service, and willingness to listen to our voices. Have a great night.
Good evening, Chair, Dr. Wilson, Superintendent Dr. Bryant, and Members of the Board, and everyone in attendance. My name is Marcia Moye-Williams, and I currently serve as Edco County Association of Educators President. I'm here tonight to respectfully ask for the board's support and gaining the transparency that both employees and the public deserve. Over thirty days ago, our association sent a written request to the district's H R team and to Dr. Bryant. That request wasn't adversarial. It was rooted in our shared belief that clear, accessible information strengthens the trust and improves our schools. Yet to date, we have not received a response. Our questions were simple and reasonable. One, we asked, and currently still ask, for a current classified pay schedule. Employees deserve to know how their pay is determined and whether it is applied equally. We also asked, what are the district's written guidelines for extra duties such as working athletic events or taking on after-school responsibilities, and how, if at all, those duties are compensated? We also asked, how many true transportation vacancies currently exist? And what is the district's plan for addressing them? Especially as more employees are required to take on dual roles and bus rides. And finally, we asked to see a comparison of actual expenditures versus projected budgets so that we, as educators, taxpayers, and community members can understand how our limited resources are being used. This is why we have asked, and will continue to ask, the board to meet us to discuss passing a meet and confer policy. None of this information should be hidden. These are matters of public record, and providing them would only build confidence among our staff and our families. Transparency is not a threat. It's an invitation for partnership, which is what we seek. When our educators, classified staff, and bus drivers understand the why behind the decisions that the district make, they can better serve the students and stay committed to the work. But when questions go unanswered, morale suffers and trust fades away. So tonight, I'm asking the board to stand with us to publicly affirm the importance of timely, transparent communication. Let's ensure that every district employee, from the classroom to the bus line, feels seen, respected, and informed. Thank you for your time tonight and for your continued service to the students and the staff of Edge County.
Farstina Lynch.
I would like to say good evening to the board, to our superintendent, Dr. Wilson, and all the rest of the staff, and to all of us that are here on tonight. I am here tonight to ask the board if you would look into my records. I have been employed with Edge County Public School for over thirty years. When I went out to retire in 2023 in May, I was called back. But during the time, I had to wait out six months. They had a shortage of bus drivers. So I had to wait out six months. But during that time, I received a card in the mail from Dr. Bridges. And she asked me to go down to the superintendent's office and talk with the secretary about my retirement. I say to the board tonight that I did that. And somewhere down the line, she let me know some of the information that I shared. They don't have no record. But I worked, some of you may know and some of you may not know. Upon graduation in 1968, I became employed with Mayo Elementary School under the principalship of Mrs. Ada P. Williams. I worked under Mr. Richard Pitt, principal over at Robertson School. I worked under Neil A. McLean at Canita High School. I was a TA. I was a lunchroom employee. I was assistant in the office during secretarial work. Well, I have not received any compensation as for retirement because the records do not confirm that my time employed here with Edge County Public Schools is eligible, or whatever they call it. But I'm saying to the board tonight, would you please look into it? I worked with Martin Middle School. I worked in the lunchroom. I was a substitute bus driver. I worked at Robertson School. I was a full-time bus driver. I was a sub in the lunchroom. And I worked in the classroom. Thank you.
Good evening. We'd like to say to the board, Dr. Johnson, Dr. Bryan, we are here on behalf of Dream Social Civic Club, and we work in collaboration with the Edge County Entrepreneurs, the Ellen Delmar Luther King Banquet and Commemorative Activities. And we are here today just to share some information that we would like to disseminate throughout the school system to hopefully draw more attention and participation in the Martin Luther King activities that are forthcoming. Dream Social Civic Club primarily works with the poster contest. And Lisa will fill you in on that information. We both are members of Dream Social Civic Club. We've been in Edge County since 2012. I'm a member, and Lisa is also a member there, along with some of your other employees with Edge County Schools.
Good evening. I'm asking, we're asking for your support and share some information with you all this evening about our annual MLK poster and drawing contest. And in the past, we have received close to a hundred entries. That was a couple of years ago. I believe it was like eighty-five, ninety entries. And our most recent one, you see maybe like twenty entries. So we've kind of been like all over the board. But I want you to, as I said, we want your support. And if you know any teachers, just encourage the kids to participate in this poster contest. This year's theme is Diversity Unites Us, Love Leads Us, and Action Propels Us. And we're just asking the children to create a poster. It can be pictures, or it can be actually hand drawn. And they will submit it. I believe the deadline, well, the deadline is December the seventeenth. And they can bring it to Thinking Room Childcare. We're asking to either have them submit it to the art teacher or the main office, and if you come and pick those up. There are cash prizes. In each category, we will have a first place prize of fifty dollars and a second place prize of twenty-five dollars. And then the categories are broken down by grade levels, which is K-1, 2 through 5, 6 through 8, and high school level. And then we're also, this year, sending it to adults. So anyone eighteen and above who has any artistic ability, we're asking that they submit an entry as well. And then, following our banquet, which will be held on January seventeenth, we will have all the posters, or as many as we can, display on display at the library from January the fifteenth until the following Friday, which is January the twenty-fourth. And I'll leave some here with Ms. Dancy so you all can, you know, get a copy of this. And then we'll try to get everything else out electronically to the schools as well. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Bryan, my name is James Rinn, 704 NC 97 East of Leggett. And first, as Vice President of Phoenix Historic Society, I want to thank Dr. Bryan, Dr. Wilson, for attending our educational program on Saturday to deal with Attila Legacy, which was a big legacy as far as education here at Tarver in Edge County. And we hope that message got across. Let me learn from that. Secondly, as I'm the past president of the UU Local 150 Chapter at the Commin' Rockin' by Engine Plant, on behalf of the UU 150, we want to stand solidarity with Edge County Association of Educators in their request for meeting confer. As well as, I'm a member of the Edge County United, which advocates for MAP-C and also stands in support of their requests for meeting confer. Pass off to Edge County Association of Educators for the level of unity they've brought together, bus drivers, custodians, teachers, teacher assistant, staff in these schools. And to have this kind of level of unity within Edge County Public Schools is very significant, important. And I ask the board to embrace this, embrace their request for meeting confer. And I think it'd be a positive thing for our students and for the whole Edge County School System. Thank you.
Mr. Millas, Dan.
Good evening. Protocol, head and call, y'all know me and I know y'all. I'm here today to represent the Eastern North Carolina Civic Group, comprised of twenty-three counties, I'm a regional director and four of them. And we meet every second Saturday in Williamson, looking around different places. You know, some of y'all came to the scholarship, like we had at Edge County College a couple of months ago. But we'll be having an educational forum. And, well, I might have to get back with you at the location, but we invite superintendents and different ones. And I hope the NCAE can send a representative or do it by Zoom. So I will be giving you that information. But I have attended two of the NCA meetings and NCAE meetings, and I am enjoying what they stand for. I support this board. I know I've been on this board for years. You want to let somebody on the board. But I just want to say, I appreciate what you do. Long you're doing what's right, good for all the children. But I stand with the NCAE for what they are doing because they are definitely standing for the children, and they need a spokesperson. I'm just coming by myself, be here to end, to twelve o'clock by myself, wait for y'all to get out of closed session. I'm getting old now, I can't do that like I used to. But I just want to thank y'all again. But I want to, on the go, record to show that I stand with the NCAE, and I hope more parents and community people come out and support what they are standing for. Thank you.
Troy Hall.
Good evening to the school board, to the superintendent, and to everybody here in attendance. I'm going to keep this short, sweet, and simple. I don't have a whole lot to say, but I got a little bit to say. I'm not a lifer. I haven't been here all my life like some have. But I do love this area. I've grown to love this area. Halifax County, Edge County, you know, I commute from Halifax, you know. But anyway, I'm here on behalf of our colleagues all around the county, whether it's, you know, custodians, teacher assistants, teachers. We all work together to make the school go. If any of us are missing, the school don't go. The school doesn't function. You know, so we just want a seat at the table. We want to work with y'all. And we believe that we can all work together to find common ground, to get some good things done. So that's all I'm asking. You know, we're not asking for anything radical or crazy. We're just asking for a seat at the table via meeting confer. And that's all I have to say.
Okay.
That means, Rick Lee. Thank you all, Mr. Bryan. Good evening to IJ's Board. I would like to report to IJ's last open session in October thirteenth meeting. In your reading, if you have found any direction to this settlement, you need to hear them ask. Hearing young, I need the emotion for proof.
May I make a motion to a school about October thirteenth, twenty twenty five regular business board meeting over session minutes. Any other disturbance on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let me know by saying aye. Oppose the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you very kindly. We will move to IJ's part of the information.
Six point one, Dr. Bryan.
Thank you, ma'am chair. A few recognitions here. First off, I'd like to recognize our ECPS Assistant Principal of the Year. Congratulations to Ms. Shannetta Pittman at Attila Middle School. It's great coming and surprising her and recognizing her as Assistant Principal of the Year. She serves to excellence at WA Attila Middle School. And everybody knows what a leader she is and dedication, commitment to student success. And she makes a tremendous impact every day. Also, I'd like to recognize a few of our employees who worked on the Burles Welcome Fund STEM Enrichment Grant, which we awarded recently, $179,000. And Ms. White, who's a science teacher at Edge County Early College High School, partner with Joseph Hayes, who is here tonight. He's our technology director, replying to grant STEM enrichment grant proposal, expand robotics programs across the district and support the Tarver Turtle's team. He was thrilled to share that the Burles Welcome Fund has fully funded the proposal and will strengthen our STEM opportunities across Edge County. Very grateful to Ms. White, Mr. Hayes, also Mr. Smith, principal at Early College, and all the other folks who were instrumental in helping us get the grant. Also, I'd like to recognize our Spark Lab team achievement at Southwest Edge County High School. Our proud ship, the Spark Lab team from Southwest Edge County High School has been selected as a state finalist in the app design competition hosted by Apple. This talented group of students will have the exciting opportunity to visit Apple's campus to compete for a state title, showcase their creativity, coding skills, and innovate problem solving on a prominent stage. Please join us in congratulating Spark Lab team for their dedication, ingenuity, and hard work. And testament to their exceptional talent and the support they've gotten from Edge County Public Schools. Finally, tonight, ECPS is involved in a district-wide food drive. ECPS has come together to support our students and families this season. Every school in the district is now a drop-off site for our district-wide food drive. And we invite the community to help ensure that no child goes hungry. And details about needed items and drop-off locations can be found on flyers that we have. Also included, it's out there on social media as well, trying to advertise for this. We're very proud of the way our students are uniting to make a positive impact on the lives of our students and families. And their hard work to make that happen. And service and support to the community are critically important. We're very proud of our students and staff for making that happen. So, ma'am chair, thanks for concluding my report for the evening.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions to Dr. Bryan, any of our ideas that we shared this day?
I'm going to also just mention as ma'am chair, I know board members are also very much involved in food drives and support. And ran miss worldlessly the other day at WA Attila Middle School with her hard work for supporting students with food and securities and different things. So I know a lot of people, you all were involved with that as well.
Thank you very much. I am six four two, minus seven. Birthday.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chair. House chair, board members, superintendent, Dr. Bryan. I'll be giving you a few minute updates. This southwest lights, we needed new lights out there. It was kind of dark. So we replaced the lights. This is how they look now. We had a gate that was broken leading to the football field. We put a brand-new gate up. This is Bullock, maintenance center. This is an old air conditioning unit. We had to take it out. We have a new one now. This is West Leonard's water heater, room one fourteen. Basically, see the old one and the new one? This is Tarver High, old doors. These are the new ones. We're going to paint them. This is Baskerville, old more than burned up. We replaced it with a new one. And this is Coca-Cola, old water heater. And replaced it with a new one.
Our maintenance staff stays really busy. I'll just leave it right there. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I will say as he as he comes to, he stepped away and he was coming back. Obviously, um he very pretty, very hard work along with the others on the Borough's Welcome STEM Awards, so congrats. Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board Member, Superintendent Dr. Brian. Tonight, I'm here to inform you that ECPS received the Borough's Welcome Fund Grant, as Dr. Brian had mentioned earlier. Um I don't have the packet in front of me, but it was a hundred and seventy nine thousand, I believe, and some change there. Um this grant will serve not only the um Tar Robo Turtles, um but it will also serve the um other high schools and middle schools. So this is a six-through-twelve grant. Um this year, this spring, the Robo Turtles will compete in the first robotics competition. Uh you're welcome to come to uh Wake County to see our two two competitions on a a Saturday and Sunday. Um you're invited. Over the summer, we'll have summer camps for our middle school and high school students. Of course, the district will hold three camps for our six-through-twelve students. In the fall, we will have um training for um our Robo Turtles. And we will start our first robe um first tech robotic competition for our middle schools and high schools also. So this is a comprehensive three-year robotics program for all six-through-eight um grade students who wish to participate. And and I I would just say it it's hard to put into numbers the amount of time they put into the grant, put it together and write it and make sure it was right. This is my first time we've applied for this plan.
Correct.
And you are going on target, on target.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Haynes. I want to thank you, I'm home for fixing my chair. I posted my chair. See that beautiful? It's a downtown barn. All of the all of the leather was chipping and I did one. And I actually couldn't do anything. He said, I think I can fix that. He did.
You got six more, sir.
Okay, six point four.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board and superintendent, Dr. Brian. Um I'm here tonight to just share that um in light of the snap update, um a team of district leaders got together to come up with a plan um on how we would feed our community and our kids at ECPS. And so um like Dr. Brian already shared, there's gonna be a drop-off at each site. Um and they will have a plan on how to distribute that out to the families. So we also have a data collection sheet that they're using to collect that data so that we can track how many families and how many kids we're feeding. Then we have um a couple of community businesses and local businesses that are doing a one-week drop-off, um once-a-week drop-off. And so we have two large locations when they're dropping off like pallets of food um or large bulk food. And there is one at PRC and one at um here at the maintenance warehouse. And so uh we just wanted to highlight a couple of businesses um and show our appreciation to Serve Pro of Rocky Mount and Tarboro, um who we apply services, and Lee Garage Overhead um for their generous donation. And they are three businesses that will be doing a once-a-week drop-off um for food for our kiddos and families.
I'd just like to echo what um Ms. Sykes has said, if I may, ma'am chair. Um the uh staff um really came together to uh try to meet a meet a need that they saw and uh and put a lot of hard work into making sure that that happened. So it's been a great response within the community and within our schools and districts to support that. And uh kudos to them for all their leadership in making that happen.
Oh, looking for the if there was a beginning that it's. I guess I guess the federal government wakes up.
Madam Chair, yes, ma'am. Uh ma'am chair, you have and board members, you have extended day trips, accepted the grant fund for J. W. Parker Middle School. Endowment Fund, the Howard Endowment Fund, a thousand dollars. And also those who accept the wonderful effective of twenty-six hundred dollars, purchased canned goods and other non-perishable items for food boxes from the local. Thing thing continues. Sorry, consent, any questions about the consent items? We probably consider approval.
What's your question? Present I which include eight point one, eight two, eight, eight point three. You only need one person for the item.
Madam Chair, we will take all the items discussed.
Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve all of the consent items and list it. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Oppose the same sign. The motion carries. Thank you very kindly. Eight point B, item four.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, uh Superintendent Dr. Brian. Um I come before you tonight to request the board approval of um the comprehensive plans for twenty-five, twenty-six, um which include our low-performing school plans, our Title One school plan, our TSI school plans, and our TSI school plans. Um at the last board meeting, you remember that um we submitted an initial draft. We had a time period that's required by general statute uh to receive feedback from the public, from the school board, um and other stakeholders. Um feedback was shared with schools and during that time period, um and schools made adjustments to those plans. Um you have a hard copy of the final plans um that they would like to present to the State Board. Um just a side note that this is not the final plan. Um it's the final plan that we'll submit to the State Board, but the school improvement plans are an ongoing process throughout the school year. Um they meet once to two times a month. They're looking at data, um they're looking at action steps, they're looking at what new action steps they need to add throughout the year. So it isn't a static plan, it is a living plan, but this will be the plan that we submit to the board uh for our December submission.
Okay, so that's the last set.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
All right, I'm gonna need some help with it. And it won't stop, you send it.
Okay.
Okay?
No problem.
I have about fifty-four acronyms.
Okay.
That we'll need, I'll need with.
Okay.
And I'll just leave it with Dr. Brian.
So Dr. Wilson, a funny story, nineteen years ago.
I will say I I will say that um I I think in looking at school improvement plans that um for for ease of uh for ease of facilitating the plans, sometimes we're we're all guilty, I think, of using acronyms too much and but it's for ease of use during us putting the plan together, so.
I understand that.
Want to make sure you're clear for what they mean, right?
That's it.
Just made it.
And it's easy 'cause I've already started filling them out, so you won't have a lot
We can get those for you, Dr. Wilson. So nineteen years ago, when I started teaching, it was a BT one. One of the first things we got was the acronym alphabet soup. And it was like four pages from the back of all the acronyms we would see in education.
And that's bullet too.
And and I I can say.
Bullet and sub, so they need to be. We don't. Bullet, they're not, so they need to be all of them.
We had an activity at the school board's conference uh in um the summer leadership conference this year, the last day, the last activity. We played school alphabet soup and we were given three pages and collectively as tables, reading just a grade.
We can we can take care of it for you. It should, it probably won't take us long, Dr. Wilson.
I pulled I pulled that list out when I went through this, and a lot of them were not on there, so. We didn't just break with the other ones, too, so.
Just one last question in reference to that. I'm not gonna call the school's name. What I'm gonna ask is baseline, the first page that we see in the document. If say school A has baseline twenty-five, twenty-six. And someone else has baseline maybe twenty-four, ten. Does that make any difference if someone is using the baseline nine years?
So we started having some of that conversation and we're giving feedback as well to schools around that, around looking at what is your baseline data? Have you reassessed? We are looking to see if they have the multiple years beyond that fourteen, too. Um one of the things we are having to shift to about two years before, two years ago, they would tell you to keep everything in the platform and don't delete anything. Um and the state has shifted to training around this idea of archiving data and updating data. Um but as schools transitioned over, um we're still in the process of that cleanup. So some schools were used to, and depending on the designation, whether it was a federal state, one department at DPI may tell you to keep everything in, one department at DPI may want to clean it up, but they kind of got on board over the past year and a half and are in the process and and updating that um approach as well, even with the star. So we're we're slowly getting that cleanup process, but that was a great question.
I would hope that we would look at that seriously and not have anyone saying that anything to argue that we've been through eleven years. You know, starting with eleven years, start with a little closer, huh?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm done.
But there are some archived data that is extremely important to the growth of the school. So it's it's.
To the history and the trajectory.
Right, there's archived data that's extremely important as to what we did and where we're going, so we need to stay there.
Right. And so those are some of the things we're looking at as we're going through and giving feedback to the schools from our authority instruction teams.
It may need to stay there, but I'd be very careful. I I would set that up in my development of the plan. I'm done. Anybody else? Have a question or comment?
Okay, so we will submit it and then this star and the star is the platform that DPI uses. Um so low-performing schools, CSI schools, um and ATS I schools are required to use it, so we just use it for all of our schools to keep consistency across the district. Um but they will, they have, uh if y'all approve the plans tonight as is, um they will have five days to submit it and then the star, you'll hit the submit button. So we get y'all's approval tonight, we'll send the email out and ask them to hit submit uh for this year. Again, it will be each month, they'll be looking at those plans and making adjustments and adding and updating.
Because if they're not looking at the plan, they will not improve it. Any other questions? Hearing none.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve eight point one, point B, approval of the comprehensive plans including low-performing schools, Title One school plans, CSI school plans, and TSI school plans for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year.
Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our comprehensive plans including our low-performing school, Item One, school plans, CSI school plans, and TSI school plans for twenty-five, twenty-six school years. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Oppose the same sign. The motion carries. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Uh recommend tonight um to the board, approve submission of distribution request Public School Building Repair and Renovation Fund with North Carolina Educational Lottery application, DPI, NC DPI for facility repairs to the roof at South Edgecombe Middle School. Estimate cost existing construction of facility roof repairs is a hundred ninety thousand dollars um for repair. And I ask for your approval on this so we can submit to the commissioners and then submit to the commissioners for approval of this submit to uh North Carolina Department of Public Construction. And the specific roof area that we're talking about is um in the connector at South Edgecombe.
Any other questions or comments to Dr. Brian on this item? Who do you say's name does that before you want to?
I'm going to.
Any other questions? I need your motion for approval of eight point two B.
Madam Chair, I make approval of the submission of distribution request Public School Building Repair and Renovation Fund, uh North Carolina Educational Lottery application to NC DPI for the facility repairs to get heat at South Edgecombe Middle School. The estimated cost of existing construction facility roof repairs is a hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve the summation, this summation of the distribution request Public School Building Repair and Renovation Fund to our North Carolina Educational Lottery application to NC DPI for the facility repairs at the roof on South Edgecombe Middle School in the amount of one hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Any other discussion or questions on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Oppose the same sign. The motion carries. Dr. Johnson, Evelyn Johnson, would you take this into close, please?
Thank you, I have a motion in the North Carolina Open News Program, section number forty-three, twenty-three eighteen, there. So we have A one, A three, and A three going to go back. Instead of first mail, as we saw, we have a third, we have a third, we have a third of the late, we have the third, we have the third, we have the third, we have the third rendered confidential under the statute of rights and privacy act. Twenty U S C one, uh two hundred thirty-two G, and the store of Coach Nega, let's bring the confidential under G S one fifteen, C dash three nineteen, two three twenty-one.
Has been moved and properly seconded that we will go into closed session. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Oppose the same sign. The motion carries.